Did you get a taste?
A little loud there. Good evening and welcome, everybody, to the City of Lake Forest Park City Council's special meeting for Thursday, November 20th. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order, and Vice Chair Goldman is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. Uh, let's see. I understand there might be an amendment to the agenda. Deputy Mayor Fertani.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Um, in honor, basically, people's time, I'd like, since we cannot add anything to the items, because this is a special meeting, but we can reorder things, I'd like to move, um, item J to, uh, af- after a public comment, I believe. Right, so the first item under five, so J, so J in front of A.
So disbanding the Climate Action Committee, uh, moving at, to immediately after public comments. Is there a second?
Right here.
It's been moved and seconded. Any, uh, discussion? All those in favor of adopting the agenda as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it, pass this unanimous. I just look down the dice, we have everyone here. Welcome, everybody. That's great. The band's back together. Thanks, guys. This is fun. All right, uh, with that, we're going to open public comments. Get my little missle here that I'm, um, required to meet. Um. The council will not be accepting online public comments. Uh, this portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council on agenda items or any other topic the council might have purview or control over. However, the mayor or council may not respond to comments from the public. If the comments are of a nature that the council does not have influence or control over, then the mayor or presiding officer may request the speaker to suspend their comments. The council may direct staff to follow up, uh, on, on items brought up by the public. Comments are limited to a three-minute time limit. Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. Welcome, everybody. All right, so let's get started. And untangle this. Uh, Sarah Phillips, you're first. Welcome. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. I just wanted to bring your attention that after some discussion with the Climate Action Committee, we're recommending to both the mayor and the council that the committee, um, the committee's work has been completed, and the committee should be disbanded in accordance with, uh, Resolution, uh, eighteen thirty-six, uh, section three, which says you can disband us whenever you want. And, uh, we're thinking that, um, we're bringing this to because we think that the work you assigned us to do is done. And that is to develop a, a, uh, climate action plan and present it to you. You all have accepted that, and then, um, and that, uh, that is, and it's not meant to suggest that the work of climate action is done. What's done is the climate action plan, which is brought to the city. And we wanted to say that we thought we had done some additional accomplishments. We had a survey that we sort of put together ourselves, and we had, um, without, uh, we had, we thought extraordinary, um, response from it, deep, and, uh, from within the community. We did an analysis ourselves of the data that we got in and included that in the report. We had collaborative programs with Shoreline and Kenmore, um, on, uh, solarizing and heat, excuse me, heat pumps. Um, we had a continued program with Shoreline, uh, with Kenmore that allowed our residents to get a reduced, uh, rate on, um, solarizing, and we had, uh, I think fourteen people who went ahead with that program. Um, we, we have a mascot. Uh, we used our young, um, uh, Lake Forest Park residents to develop a mascot that we've put in a variety of places. Um, we had, um, we've established a book club, which has about thirty-five people on the list, and we've read a million books. Um, no, we've read probably twelve or fourteen books, both fiction and nonfiction. Um, we, uh, the Climate, uh, Committee sponsored the Climate Hub, and, uh, we did a lot of outreach to, um, uh, events at the farmer's market, the green fair, and, um, uh, and other events. There are some things that are left undone, um, and one is we didn't get our comic version of the, um, of the Climate Action Plan. Um, and we had difficulty getting, we always had difficulty getting some data. We had trouble getting local information on heat pumps, uh, using how many people were using oil, um, how many solar panels, so homes were installed with solar panels. Um, and we, that, even that, that targeting that both, uh, Climate Element used and the Climate Committee used that included airplanes, we find to be continually troublesome because we don't know how you fix, how you, you all fix airplanes, flying in airplanes. So that's a troublesome piece for us. Um, but we, and we also left undone establishing a long-term relationship with the schools, which was our, we've been working on that. Um, we now have some entry into it, but I would say we have not, didn't do that. And we haven't, and there's no climate manager onboard. Um, but, uh, we wanted to thank both the mayor and the city council for being gracious to us at every point in our presentations, um, to listen carefully to what we had to say. And, um, we appreciate, um, the, the acceptance of the committee, of committee report, and we encourage you to, um, continue to take action, um, and that, uh, hiring a climate manager, we think is key. It's the, it's an outward-facing position, which, which is really important to the city in terms of, uh, moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sarah. I appreciate your time. We all do. Uh, let's see, Ms. Erickson, you are next. Welcome.
Uh, good evening, council members. My name is Tamara Erickson, and I served on the Climate Action Committee. I know you have an enormous amount on your plate in this mid-biennium budget adjustment and a lot of competing priorities. I'm here tonight simply to ask that as you weigh those choices, you move forward with funding the climate manager now rather than postponing it. To me, this position is not about adding something extra on top of what the city already does. It's about strengthening the capacity we already have. A climate manager can bring in external funding by tracking and applying for state and federal grants so we can pursue climate and energy projects without leaning so heavily on the general fund. That's one concrete way to stretch limited dollars further and reduce pressure on local taxpayers. This role also reduces risk and protects city infrastructure. Coordinated planning around wildfire smoke, extreme heat, flooding, and erosion directly affects our roads, utilities, city facilities, and natural areas. Having someone keep an eye on those risks and plan ahead means fewer surprises and fewer purely reactive decisions. Over time, this position can support operational efficiency as well. Through energy efficiency projects, thoughtful electrification planning, and better use of data, those kinds of investments can lower operating costs and reduce the need for emergency spending down the road. A climate manager would also help us keep place, pace with state and federal requirements, making sure we're aligned with laws like the Climate Commitment Act and House Bill eleven eighty-one, and avoiding the stress of scrambling to meet new expectations with no dedicated capacity. Just as importantly, the role builds coordination and clarity. Working across departments, a climate manager can help ensure that climate and resilience are woven into day-to-day operations and long-term planning rather than handled in isolation. And with regular reporting and metrics, you and the community get a clear picture of what's being done, what's working, and where the gaps are. As a parent raising two kids here, I think a lot about what Lake Forest Park will feel like to them ten or twenty years from now. How safe it will be in heat waves and smoke, how strong our infrastructure will be, and whether we use the tools available to us when we have them. I know you think about those long-term questions, too. With deep respect for the difficult trade-offs you're making, I would ask that you include the climate manager in this budget adjustment so the city can start realizing these benefits now rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you, Tamara. Appreciate your time. Uh, Mimi Bertram, please. Welcome.
Hello, council. I am Mimi Bertram. I'm a resident of Lake Forest Park, and I've been on the Climate Action Committee for the past three years, I think it was, that we spent working on Climate Action Plan, and then three of us continued on to help with the, um, policy document. And, um, it was a rich time. Um, it was really an educational experience for me. Um, but we did put our heart and souls into that document and into that work, and it's the time, now is the time. I work in climate twenty-four hours a day, and, um, there's, the time was really five years ago, ten years ago, to really be doing this work, to build in resilience to the community and to be working towards reducing, um, our emissions. Um, we're ready. I think it's time, and if you wait, if this doesn't happen back-to-back with all the effort that we did, um, you will lose ground. I think you really will. Um, we've worked with the community members, we've worked with you, um, and we've really, it's, it's, that's all I really wanted to say, is that it's really the time is now, and I hope that you can find a way to make that happen. Um, either with a climate manager or with some other mechanism within the city government that can make that happen. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mimi. Appreciate it very much. Um, we have a few folks that are struck, stricken here. Cause I just want to make sure that we're not missed.
Some confusion with the budget here.
Okay, you bet. Uh, and then, uh, Ken Cassover.
Who else wants to, but he cited a cheaper budget thing.
Okay, yeah, I will check. Thank you for that. I forgot about the hearing in terms of the signup.
Good evening, council. I'm Ken Cassover, and I wanted to talk just a little bit about Prop One and some implications here. I knocked on maybe a hundred and seventy-five doors. Um, and so I heard a lot, and part of what I heard was based on distrust and misinformation. And as it is, it's hard to, you know, to get a levy lift passed because if people don't understand things, they're more likely to vote against it. And so I had to work pretty hard to try to clarify things. Um, and I might say that we clearly need to get ahead of that, and I'm kind of glad and looking forward to, uh, the new year. And I think that, um, hopefully with us getting ahead, we'll be able to deal with the misinformation and distrust. I heard distrust of, of the council here. And I know the people on this council, as do a lot of people in the city, and I don't, we are so lucky, and also distrust of the administration. And I, I frankly, it bothered me and upset me. So what I'd like to say is I don't think we should just take money out of the reserve funds. Obviously, you guys are going to have to figure it all out. Who am I to tell you where you should take the money out of in, in terms of the climate action and this police? I trust that you will all be diligent in doing that. But, you know, the word was, oh, we have plenty of money, we have a ton of money. And it got complex. What people needed to be, begin to understand is not so complex. One percent a year is all we're allowed to raise things. That's not, that doesn't take rocket science. But it did take a lot of explaining due to the information that was going out, out there. I, I don't know whether that misinformation was intentional or not, or just based on ignorance. Uh, but I, probably a little bit of both. Okay? So that's all I want to say. I, I, I think we need to save the reserve funds for emergencies in part. Because who knows where we're going to be when we really need the money? And we shouldn't just be spending every last penny. I don't think that's the prudent thing to do for citizens of our community, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ken. Appreciate your comments. Uh, that's all we have who are signed up here. Let's check with, is there? Okay, uh, Deputy, would you, could somebody grab that list? Yeah, there's a public hearing list. It's all right. Deputy, the Deputy Mayor, um, Fertani just alerted me that people might have signed up in the wrong list, and it's easy to get these things confused, so. Um, so just for everybody's verification, we do have a public hearing coming up. Uh, so if you're speaking to the public hearing, the topic in the public hearing, then please, uh, wave off and hold your comments. We'd be happy to hear them at some point.
Unfortunately, it doesn't actually say who's speaking.
Ah, okay. Well.
You might just ask.
Uh, we'll just go through the list. This is great. So if you want to speak, generalities, not on the public, uh, hearing. Um, I'm going to go through the list. We have about ten people here that are, that have signed up, some yes, some no.
Point, point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Um, so just to clarify, the public hearing is, is about basically the, um, amending the biennial budget, levying property tax, levying the general taxes, setting the surface wa- water utility rates, setting the sewer utility rates, and adopting the user fee schedule, and amending the business and occupation tax. Yeah.
That's correct.
So those, those are the topics. So if you're speaking on those, there'll be time for that. If you're speaking on anything else, this is now your time.
Yeah, okay. Let's start through. Uh, Bob Wells. No, okay. You bet. We'll, uh, public hearing? Did you want to speak at the public hearing? Okay, right, that's fine. Oh, this is public hearing. I'm sorry. This is, public hearings. That is a little confusing. It should say public hearing, speaking, or, do you want to speak? It says, do you want to speak or not? Uh, that, that's fine. So let's just go down through the list, and then I'll call you and turn after that. Uh, Anne, did you want to speak? General, yes. Anne Udalloy, please, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I apologize for getting the lists wrong. I am Anne Udalloy, a resident of Lake Forest Park, and I've had the honor and privilege of serving as the vice chair for the Climate Action Committee for several years now. I am very pleased that we were able to complete the council's request of us that we create a climate action plan and also support development of the, um, climate element of our comprehensive plan. I think it is critical, based on everything we've learned through this time, that we continue with this program by hiring a climate manager who can help us access and leverage Climate Commitment Act funds and other funds that will be available to help implement climate actions that the city has agreed to pursue. By adopting the plan, you've agreed to do this. Our community has agreed to do this, and I am really pleased to see that we will have an opportunity to do this if we bring onboard a climate manager. Right now, our current, um, staff are already pressed to the limit with accomplishing the tasks that they've been requested to perform by the city council through the city manager. They can't add to their plate. If we don't have someone who actively addresses this, works on writing for grants, works on getting the funding that is available to us to implement these plans, it simply won't be done, and we'll be in the same position that we were when we started this project, looking at a dusty plan that had been written a decade or more earlier, where nothing had actually been implemented and the city had made no progress. We don't have time for that anymore. Time is a luxury that's not available. I'm a huge optimist. I believe that in three years, we're still going to have a thriving community and be building towards a much better future, a future of, by, and for the people. The people will need to have a resilient climate, a reasonable place for kids to grow up. We need to make decisions based on what will happen in twenty years, forty years, sixty years, not on whether or not our pocketbooks are feeling a pinch today. You will face some very difficult decisions. I hope that among those, you hold firm in your resolve to hire a climate manager so that we can begin implementing this program. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Anne. Just checking in, did you want to speak at the public hearing as well? Okay. I want to check your name off here. Uh, Mr. Cassover, I'm assuming you want to speak at the public hearing too, or are you good? Okay, I, I will, uh, consider that, um, negative on the public hearing. Okay, um, let's see, Hannah Blackburn, uh, for general comments, public hearing, okay. Uh, let's see, Amy, is that Hannigan? I apologize. Yeah, please. My, you.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you, and thank you for giving me this opportunity. Uh, I am speaking on behalf of the pickleball players at Horizon View, and also this is Becky Hamilton, who is here as the pickleball advocate for Lake Forest Park Elementary. Now, the very first thing I'm not going to talk about till the end is potties, porta-potties, but we'll hold on to that for a minute. Okay, I did send the council an email, asked Becky and maybe a couple other people regarding our need for some improvements to the courts. As you know, there is very active participation at both Lake Forest Park Elementary and at Horizon View. The participants, the pickleball players, have already raised on their own over twenty-two thousand five hundred. I am amending the email. So we recalculated, and we realized that twenty-two thousand five hundred was raised by individual players. And we feel very confident that the board can support us in the improvements that we're looking for. We are looking for benches, some of which may be already available in storage, as I think Cory Roche may have said. I'm also on the parks board, and I have been talking to Cory about this. So maybe there are benches hidden in a storage area that are available. If not, we're looking for six benches, four for Lake Forest Park Elementary, and two for Horizon View. At Horizon View, you might know, that's a very high point in King County elevation-wise, and the, and the wind is huge. So we really could use some wind screens up there. Very importantly, uh, Lake Forest Park Elementary is in need of new lights. Uh, the lights are old and do not really give good coverage for playing at night. Um, and now to the most important, which is the porta-potties. As you know, there is one porta-potty at Lake Forest Park, at, uh, Horizon View. Porta-potties are important, especially when numerous players are seniors. That's a long way to walk at Horizon View and get back and continue playing, and there are no porta-potties at Lake Forest Park. So we'd really like you to consider that. So please include us in your current budget. We're looking, we're not sure exactly how much all of this would cost. We're thinking of an initial investment of about twenty-five thousand dollars. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Hannah. Appreciate that. Hey, um, let's see, well. I said. Apologies.
Constance?
Uh, not signed up. Is there anybody else that's signed up for general comment? I apologize. I said, Amy, I apologize for mis, um, attributing names to you. Let's see, hold on. Uh, Constance, Sally, Byron, anyone else want to speak to in general? Yes. Please, this is on the, um, hearing list, so bear with us, folks.
I'm not sure this is right or not, but, um, I just briefly, uh, wanted to say that, uh, in these times of climate change and, um, there's no predicting what will happen, what can happen or could happen, um, in a state of emergency and there are many unknowns. We have, um, a great group of people who have come together and come up with a climate plan, and I just want to reinforce that I think it's extremely important that we continue and get that client, uh, climate manager in place so that we can move forward and protect each other and ourselves, um, when inevitable. And hopefully prevent some of it before it happens. But, um, anyway, I hope that we can find resources for that. I'm sorry that we didn't have Prop One pass, because I thought that was still important. We have other safety features in our community that, um, I hope can continue without needing into the budget that's, um, being in reserve for a while, but it might not be there for long. Just, uh, the day that it was, uh, Prop One was being, the votes were being counted. My husband Byron and I were out walking our dog, and, um, we saw a, like, across the street on Ballenger, we saw two our police cars there, and one was a police car, and the other one was a, um, oh, a, uh, crisis vehicle.
RCR.
Just thought, you know, this is, this is it. This is the picture that, you know, we're dealing with here, and we need to have that support for everyone. And, um, it's, you know, these are tough times. There's a lot of things going on, and we need to support everyone in our community, and I hope that we can do that without that extreme force.
Thank you, Connie. Appreciate your comments. I just want to go through the list and make sure I'm not missing anybody here. The general list is completed. I've gone through the public hearing list. But, no, no. Um.
You're good then.
I think so. Is there anyone else who would like to speak, make general public comment before we go to the hearing here in a little bit? Sal, you're, uh, did not sign up to speak during the hearing or public comment? Did you want to? I'm closing public comment here. Not putting you on the spot. You don't have to speak. You could sing a song if you like. It's all good.
Well, it's about, again, it was about Prop One, right?
No, 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 no. This is just general public comment. So, no, that's okay.
Yeah, why?
Again, the song is great.
Hi. So it's about anything I want. But I only have three minutes. I can see that. Okay, well, I just found about this because Josh sent some email out to some people, and then Connie had a question about it and sent it to me. And I don't even really know what it's about yet, but I know I wanted to be here for some reason. And so I guess what I'm saying is I think there's got to be better communication with our community. You know, I, I ran over here because my mom had an appointment with the doctor. I barely make it here. I'm sorry. And I care about the city, you know? I care. I know each one of you has people now, and I met you too, and I like you. You know, I mean, I'm sorry. I shouldn't have said that, I guess. But the point is, is we're such a small city. We should be able to communicate and let half the people we talked to about Prop One, they're busy with their kids, but when we explained it to them, they got it. They want sidewalks, you know, the reason why we're going to have sidewalks is because the last one didn't pass. And we care about, I don't see, I don't see our police people here, but anyway. Um, they're valuable to everybody in our community as well. So something went wrong this time again. Yes, we were closer, but I'm tired of not being able to pass something as simple for our city to pay for the, the things you provide us. And I don't know the answer, but I think we have to do something, at least with communication amongst you guys, and somehow bringing it out to our community so we're educated enough to know that if we hire someone to, to clean our roof, we pay them. If we hire someone to clean our streets, we pay you. If we play, if we have an alarm system in our house, we pay them, and it's the same thing for a city. We, they, I think we get it, but something is missing. And I don't know, what was, what were we supposed to say? Were we supposed to say something?
No, you're good.
They're good? I'm sorry. That's it.
Thank you, Seth. Thank you, Sally. Apologies for putting you on the spot. I, I saw you racing in and, and. Okay, with that, is there anyone else that wants to, to, um, participate in public comment at the podium? If not, uh, Vice Chair Goldman has a list of, uh, public commenters to read into the record.
Yes, thanks. We had a number of people email us in the last week or so, um, regarding Proposition One. Nate Herzog wrote us to ask about increasing the sales tax to fund public safety. Gail Gross emailed us, uh, to comment on making cuts to the budget, both in public safety and the climate manager. Um, I apologize if I mispronounced anybody's name. Um, Yane Kaye, uh, wrote us about prioritizing cuts to public safety and being able to maintain parks and other services. And then the following people emailed us about amending the budget to include additional parks funding for pickleball. Becky Hamilton, Allison Connell, Tim Truong, Amy Hannigan, Colin West, John Hamilton, David Bartnik, and Carrie Stalter.
Okay, with that, we will close public comment, and more fun to come. We've got a hearing coming up, folks. Okay, um, we're going to close that off. Thank you, everybody. And then we are moving on to, uh, a little bittersweet here, disbanding the Climate Action Committee. Director Hoffman, this is in your wheelhouse, sir. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Mark Hoffman, Community Development Director.
A lot of the general comment uh, from members of the Climate Action Committee is spot on. Um, but I could add, I've been here two years and they certainly accomplished everything they've spoken, but there's more. What they brought to other processes is priceless. Coming into this building tasked with doing a Growth Management Act periodic update or uh, having Cascadia prepare a climate action plan or a climate element. We're well versed at that, but what we don't have is that community knowledge, community energy, passion and motivation. And the Climate Action Committee certainly did that. So the long laundry list that they did, specifically Sarah, Mimi and, and while we were doing the periodic update, we passed all the draft elements across all commissions and received early feedback specifically from CAC. In addition, and even though they are a temporary task force tasked with the climate action plan, they were still in place to help with the climate element. Again, different contract Cascadia, but with that local community knowledge. So I'm very grateful for those two processes that depending on how tonight goes are now done. So um, particular appreciation and thanks. They are codified as a temporary task force, uh, different than the Planning Commission. On November fourth, they held their meeting, had a lengthy discussion, lots of thanks, lots of rea- reasoning. Deputy Mayor Ferratani can uh, go into that better than I can, but their motion was to recommend disbanding. But not for their work to stop. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Fer- Ferratani, did you want to speak to the topic?
Yes, I do. Um, so the uh, the, the uh, motion, well, the idea to disband the committee came about organically from the committee itself. So was not a staff idea, was not a council idea. I think one of the nice things about that committee is that they understood what their task was. They completed their task and I want to add that a fine job of completing that task. And they realized that once the task was done, that the remit was done and it would be good to basically turn the reins over, as it were, to the next phase of implementation of the plan. So now that we have a perfectly good climate plan, uh, climate action plan, and we have a perfectly good climate element, we will hopefully um, approve in a few uh, within a few days. That basically the work of that, uh, those documents should be done by another body. And so what that body looks like, I don't know. But uh, um, the fact is that this current body's job is done and I wanted to thank them very much for a fine job. There'll be a photo op later, so okay. But in any case, um, so with that preface, I'd like to uh, move to uh, exercise. And I don't know the uh, our, our municipal code well enough. Where is it?
Says eighteen thirty-six?
Yep. So uh, we have our resolution number eighteen thirty-six, which contains the uh, mechanism for the disbandment of the CAC. And so I'd like to invoke that. So I'm making a motion to invoke that particular clause, which I believe is section. Three of the uh, of, yeah, of, of Resolution Number eighteen thirty-six. Yes.
Second.
So in the second to invoke Clause uh, three in Resolution eighteen thirty-six to disband the Climate Action Committee. Uh, is there any discussion? Councilor Riddle, Councilor Good, and then.
Who?
Just go down.
Thank you. You're going to hear that a lot, I think. Um, your tenacity as a group to not only achieve what you were tasked by the council to achieve, but to do so with such depth and uh, knowledge. And as Director Hoffman said, you've sort of emanated that through other folks who are with you. I'm, I'm honored to be able to have participated in my small piece in the Climate Hub. You are all very dedicated to ensuring that this beautiful city has a future that's just as beautiful as today. So I just want to say thank you. Um, and I'm sorry that we are seeing you disbanded as this and I hope that we can continue to work together on climate issues in the future.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Good.
I, I say thank you too. Uh, I understand that it is a temporary task force that you were, that you were participating in. Though I do uh, feel bad about there won't be a citizen group of some sort that will participate in climate issues moving forward because a climate action manager on their own can't communicate with city residents and with community the way that you have. So I hope that there could be a citizen group of some sort that could come out of your, the fruits of your labor so that all of that labor won't be lost at all. So that's what I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Vice Chair Goldman.
Um, yep, I will echo. Um, thank you for your hard work, um, not just with the Climate Action Plan, but also with the climate element, um, with the development of the Climate Hub over Third Place Commons. I know you've been very busy. Uh, I want to look to the future. From the city side, our future is going to be implementing the Climate Action Plan that you wrote. Uh, from your side, um, if you want to take a break, you can. But if you are still interested in volunteering, we have a number of other uh, city commissions. Planning Commission, Tree Board, Parks Board. I feel a bit selfish as the liaison of the Tree Board. I think in my tenure, I don't think we've ever been fully stocked with residents in the three years I've been the liaison to that committee. Um, so there are ample opportunities. We'd love to see you continue to engage with the city. And also just informally by talking to your neighbors, um, other residents, just making them aware of what the city is working on. And so that way we can still continue to move forward. So thank you for your hard work.
Thank you, Vice Chair Goldman. Councilor McCarthy.
Yes, um, speaking last now, it sounds like I'm copycatting what they said. Two things. One, I just wanted to express appreciation for the work that you did. But also too, I saw it, um, you know, by other ways. I know you've, you've been a fixture at meetings and this is great to come to, to these council meetings. But I had first exposure when I was on the Planning Commission and walking through those documents and really taking the time to unpack for that audience was really meaningful. Um, I also ran into you guys at all of the public events too that we had where I brought my kids and we talked about certain things that impact um, you know, our community, community. And I think that that was really great that you're touching so many different diverse audiences. And now to go back to the second point, kind of what Paulo was saying is that there's just a lot of um, momentum. And if any of you are still interested in serving in some kind of capacity, you have so much energy and have touched so many different ways and bringing a lot of enthusiasm, that would be great to see that in other, other facets. So thank you so much for what you guys have done uh, over the last couple of years.
Colleagues, any other comments? Uh, just quickly, I, I'd like to chime in. Chair's privilege if I might. This is really an example of synergy. What the work that the Climate Action Committee did enabled other groups to do their good work and it informed all those processes as over the last couple of years. Um, we sincerely thank you for your efforts and I, and I hope fervently that we're going to be able to continue the momentum as people have indicated here from the dais. And I think that there's real opportunities for people to continue to stay engaged. We do have opportunities uh, in the coming, almost immediately and in the coming year for uh, different volunteers as well as um, if you choose to continue your good work in, uh, out in the public. It is as, as indicated by Councilor Good, being a voice of, of um, getting the word out is, is really critical to helping people understand the realities of what we're facing, particularly in a, in a very sensitive place like our community when it comes to the environmental gains that we've achieved. And we need to hold on to those fervently and um, make sure we don't slip backwards. So we do thank you very much for your, your enormous lift. With that, uh, going back to the main um, motion, all those in favor of uh, enacting art of provision three of Resolution eighteen thirty-six to disbanding the Climate Action Committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it. Thank you, Council. Thank you very much, everyone. Yeah, uh, and we do have certificates of appreciation for the members that are here. Deputy Mayor Ferratani has them. And if you'd like to do a, it would be great to have a photo for everybody to get it into the record. We don't celebrate some of these things as much as we should. So if you, you'll come up and I call the thanks, Sarah, those.
You know, we're unconstrained now.
And in the sense, Brian Saunders, Matthew Sun, and David Campbell, we also thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Do you want to get a picture? Hey, thank you all. We really appreciate it. And a big thanks to Deputy Mayor Ferratani for being a steadfast champion for the group and supporting them through the whole process. Thank you again, everyone. Okay, um, we're moving on to uh, the public hearing on the Budget Amendment for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-six property tax levy, twenty twenty-six general taxes, twenty twenty-six surface water utility rate, twenty twenty-six sewer utility rates and twenty twenty-six user fees. And setting the stage tonight, uh, Council, there are going to be some items that we're going to be considering um, for action because of deadlines. So not all of the items, but we'll talk about that after the public hearing. And Director Vaughn, you have the floor. Thank you, Lindsay.
So I to briefly go over a presentation that mostly on some fronts will, will feel very familiar. Um, the first piece of it going in, we're going to stay focused on the public hearing, more on the revenue side for this conversation. So the first item is walking into the property tax. So as the levy um, did not pass, this is back to the standard of the property, the twenty twenty-five property tax. This table should look very familiar for those of you that have been on council for a while. Um, as I bring it back on an annual basis. Even though we do adopt a biannual budget, the property tax is adopted on an annual basis. So for twenty twenty-six, the preliminary uh, levy lift rate for the city of Lake Forest Park uh, is, has gone down from twenty twenty-five because the assessed value of the city has gone up and they have a inverse relationship with one another. So it's point six six nine oh eight. The calculation, just so it's out there, and as part of the levy conversation, we had it built in that you could um, play with that on our website. But this is the standard calculation, the assessed value divided by a thousand times the, the updated levy rate. So the one percent that everybody talks about uh, is a value. Um, the city does receive three point five million in property tax. And the one percent has a value of thirty-five thousand dollars. There are a couple more uh, pieces of revenue that are more one time. The new construction is about fifteen thousand five hundred. Um, and the re-leaving prior to uh, prior year refunds. That means if there is a variance in any way that is trued up, um, and that's a value of just under fourteen thousand. So because these are preliminary numbers, we do have to estimate and in order to incorporate and make sure that the city is able to capture um, everything that it can within the property tax when they submit the ordinance to King County, the King County's Assessor's Office. Um, just for general information, as a whole, the city's portion of the pie of property tax and the whole pie comes with the schools, King County, fire, library and our city. Our city has under eight percent of that uh, pie. So then going into the other revenue side of for our sewer and surface water. Surface water, I'm going to focus on first actually, even though uh, sewer is first on the slide because surface water is also charged through our property tax. So um, King County administers our surface water. So therefore um, that is an important ordinance to, or excuse me, resolution on this one to have adopted within the month of November so that King County can have it in order to properly populate those um, the tax, that all of the invoices in order for all of the residents to receive their property tax. Boy, I'm tripping over some words, to receive those about in the February timeframe. And so what was proposed and put in the original adopted budget for the surface water was an increase of fifteen percent, ten percent on the operational side um, and five percent in order to continue supporting the stormwater program coordinator, which was, which is a, a new position that has been filled within the city. So then walking back to the sewer, the sewer utility operations, actually last year, we did adopt a resolution approving the twenty twenty-five rate and the twenty twenty-six rate, thinking and being very optimistic that King County had given us the correct rate we're going to increase. And then at the final hour, I realized that they increased it an additional half percent. So I am bringing that back um, as they increased it to seven and a half percent. That is the only change being requested on this sewer utility increase is simply to pass it through. Um, increase King County's to being a true uh, uh, seven and a half percent, which equated to thirty cents. So last year, um, when we adopted the twenty-six rate, it was sixty-two dollars and thirty-six cents. And now it's sixty-two dollars and sixty-six cents. Um, so what that does is the city of Lake Forest Park's rate is not proposing to change from what was adopted and presented in the twenty twenty-six rate, just that variance of the half percent. Um, so then again, because we bill on a bi-monthly basis, that's what we're showing here is the one seventy-two forty-eight. Um, and then making note that the city does also have uh, a service tax on, in addition. And so that is being included um, to present both of those to you. And um, walking down, um, again, staying focused more on the revenue side. So the teamster salary and benefits, that's more of an expenditure. And then walking down on the surface water, the material bin covers that is more of a focus on the expenditure side. And then the twenty twenty-six user fee schedule. Oh. Did I go too far? There we go. Okay, so the twenty twenty-six proposed user fee schedule, uh, there's just a couple items here that the city is proposing to um, adjust. So on for passports, uh, due to increasing costs of supplies, et cetera. They're proposing to increase the fee five dollars, so from twenty dollars to twenty-five dollars. And then a kind of adapting to the market, there's an additional, um, this is a new ad. So a digital photo is being, is now being requested from within the passport um, department. And so now the city is just adding a, a line item to be able to um, have that fee in addition. So then walking down to the building fees that are being requested, these are based on the August twenty twenty-five International Code Council. And it's just um, staying true to what they are recommending as the standard rate. So for a standard home, it's increasing to one six, or from one sixty-eight, excuse me, to one seventy. And then for a utility billing, building and like a garage, it's proposing to increase from sixty-seven fifty-four to sixty-nine twenty, or sixty-four per square foot. And um, also adding a note on within the user fee of, which is a current practice that the city already does, but adding a note on our user fee saying if there's any form of outside consultant. that is tied to a specific project, that that consultant fee is passed through to um to the user of that fee. So just for more transparency. And then again, we've already touched on the sewer monthly service, um, and it's just showing that variance of what it was for twenty five, walking it to what it will be on a monthly basis for twenty twenty six. And then the surface water utility assessments, again, walking that through of what it was and what it will be for twenty five to twenty six. And so as I started this presentation with, there are a couple items um that were requesting for approval in November, and that's the property tax levy for twenty twenty six. There's two ordinances tied to those property taxes. One that is quoting the one percent levy limit um to increase for that thirty five thousand dollars. And the other one is basically giving an overview of the assessed value and the total amount that you're you're requesting to um collect in totality with that estimate of the additional two hundred thousand. So there's two ordinances that are necessary um in order to move forward with our property tax that are brought forward on an annual basis. And then walking down to the surface water rate increase, um, that ties with the property tax with the King County, with King County as they administer that for the city. And then um that is actually tied to a resolution um twenty five, twenty forty five, setting the utility, the surface water utility rates for twenty twenty six. What is also being requested to be considered for this evening is to go ahead and um adopt the surf or the sewer utility rates as we know what they will be for twenty twenty six. In addition to adopting the twenty twenty six user fee schedule, those two are being requested, they are not mandatory that they are adopted in November, they could be adopted in December, and that's uh simply a choice and up on the table. And then um with the goal is to continue the conversations um in order to adopt the actual mid bi biennial budget in December. And that concludes.
Could you go back to the previous slide and just leave that?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Director Vaughn. Colleagues, questions for Director Vaughn? Tonight, the intent is, again, the public hearing tonight is on uh ordinance twenty five um excuse me, twenty five thirteen uh twenty five thirteen thirteen, twenty five thirteen fourteen, twenty five twenty two zero four five um two zero four six and two zero four seven. And Director Vaughn has indicated various things here, so questions for staff? Councilor Lebo.
Uh, thank you, Director Vaughn. If I understood, so the, just so I understand the dates, the proposal is to adopt the uh mid biennium uh adjustment in December, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and the adoption of the ordinances and resolutions that go along with that, would that also be December?
Uh, uh, there's a time, there's a mandatory for the property tax, what's stated on this slide for the levy, um, because King County needs it. By their cutoff is by December first, November thirtieth is when all of the cities are supposed to have these adopted ordinances and resolutions into the county. So the property tax is basically mandatory within November. Um, those two ordinances, in addition to the surface water, those are requested for approval in November. And I will even be a little ambitious and say hopefully this evening.
So if I understood, um, these are items five, C, D, E, F, G, is that correct?
That's correct.
And um H?
No.
No, H is a different.
Anus, yeah.
Yeah.
And that would be in what time period?
Um, so, so the three are, the three that are tied to the property tax need to be uh adopted per se and within the November timeframe. By November thirtieth for us to, for the city in order to present them to the county, which is C, D, and E.
So is the request for this evening or for uh next week?
The requests will be for this evening.
And then um F and G?
F and G would be my preferred adoption in order to just have all of the rates set so that we can make sure that we're messaging the correct information.
Your preferred would be this evening?
Preferred, that, yeah, not mandatory, though. There isn't, um, so we are driving, we can set that rate and make it, make the change effective on one one.
Okay. Then going back, thank you for the clarification. Um, and then the uh ordinance amending the B and O tax would be?
That's uh the ordinance amending the B and O tax, um, that is effective. We need to have that across the finish line by December thirty first. For a one one.
Okay, okay. Council members, other questions? Looking around the dais first, John. Anyone else?
Yes.
That's where we're at.
So just uh so that I can kind of absorb this, what what you want tonight, the tax levy rate, um, those are essentially given. There's no really a variable that we can bring into play there. Uh, we're uproot one percent and then it and then whatever the general taxes, and that goes the same with the surface water rate. It's adjusting for King County, it's.
So those three, those three, well, excuse me, the two ordinances and the one resolution, um, to state that correctly for the record, um, have already been built into the adopted budget, just to make sure that message is clear. Um, the council always has the the option to either choose to adopt, to approve and adopt an item or not. Um, that being said, if that decision varied from what we structurally put within the budget, that could have some additional challenges.
Thank you for that clarification. Essentially, we've already contemplated and have brought this from last year.
Deputy Mayor Ferratoni.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Director Vaughn. Um, I, you know, having worked on some of the Prop one um numbers, I just wanted to thank you so much, you and your staff, for working with our partners at the county, just trying to get that straightforward thing of what is the rate? And what are we, what what are, what is the income coming in, you know? And I know how difficult that calculation is. I appreciate you staying on top of that, really, we really benefit on the dais here from that, so thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And Councilor Lebo.
Okay, so going back a moment, so um these rates are already built into the budget, so you're not amending, not proposing to amend uh the mid biennium budget.
The only rate that changed, and we are, I am actually requesting to increase the revenue and the expenditure is this uh sewer, because that that went up the additional uh point five percent, and we had already built in the rate at seven percent as the pass through. So yes, there is that one piece of that varying information is being requested on the revenue and the expenditure side as a direct pass through um that will be received from our ratepayers, whether it's residential or commercial. It increases on both sides. Um, and then walking that through that we pay directly to King County for the treatment of wastewater services.
Okay, thank you. And then on the um on the property tax, my understanding is that we currently budgeted seven point one six, seven point one six uh million for the property tax. But if you add in the increase tonight and the two hundred thousand, will that our um estimated property tax would be seven point three million? So do you need to do a budget uh adjustment to reflect that you have additional revenue capacity for the property tax?
So the two hundred thousand is just an overestimate to make sure that we capture every dollar that's available, because these are so early, we don't know the exact amount that we're going to capture. This is the same in many states and with redevelopment agencies, you always estimate high so that you don't miss out on dollars. So if what comes in is higher, then yes, we would amend, but we would not amend it this time because this is only in an estimation.
Colleagues, excuse me, listen to my voice, other questions for? Yes, Councilmember, good.
Um, so just to, so the only change that you're recommending is the one, the sewer utility operations fund, and that moved from, it's just thirty cents, since it's going from looks like sixty two or sixty two thirty six, it's going to sixty two sixty six.
Correct.
Okay.
Um, and of however, I, yes, these are the only, that's the only recommended changes, but because um even though we adopt the biennial budget, the one challenge is that we have to adopt the property taxes and the surface water rates because they're tied together on an annual basis. So we we build, um, we have these conversations throughout the budget discussion um and then build it in as if, basically as ifs, that's a probably a good way to to put it. Um, and um if then uh there is a varying decision, whether it's in in favor or uh to pull it back, then an adjustment would need to be made either way. And I'm just grateful that I caught that King County adjusted, and I note to self, I think we will be adopting the surf or the sewer rates, even though we are given information that it just might be a good valuable lesson learned that maybe we just shouldn't adopt those ahead of time. I'm just grateful I caught it.
Thank you, Councilor, for your question. Mr. Lebo.
Thank you. Um, I'm on page eleven of the packet. And I just wanted to check um down at the bottom where we have the um the uh fund balance and the revenues and the expenditures. The fund balances are as of what date?
I'm.
So the actual beginning fund balances are of of what?
One one.
One one twenty five, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
And then at the end is the projected twenty twenty six. And we can correct that on, or we can
It would, it would be.
The additional information, I shouldn't say correct, we can add that additional information before it's.
It would be helpful to indicate what date these reflect. Yeah, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Ferratoni.
Yeah, and again, um, thanks for the uh all the clarifications you've been giving us. Just uh one point here is that the um, the reason why we're doing the uh property tax, the the ordinance thirteen thirteen separate from the thirteen fourteen is that the, meaning the property tax is the one percent, and leaving the general property tax is kind of the base rate?
Um, that might be, and I I that I, is that illegal? I don't even.
Okay, so I'm just wondering what the difference between uh ordinance thirteen thirteen and thirteen fourteen are.
So my end, go ahead.
Um, the county is very particular that they want those two separated, and to be honest with you, I'm not sure why.
Oh.
They look very much alike to me.
They do.
That is their.
Just wondering.
That is their request, and every single year they get a copy of my uh draft. I will call them resolutions and or ordinances, and this is actually directly what they would prefer. A couple years ago, they were different, and they liked this better. I said, no problem, we will keep you happy. Um.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, colleagues, any questions for, excuse me, for Director Vaughn or Newsreel Hill or Ms. Pratt? Otherwise, we will move on to opening the public hearing, there'll be other options to discuss these topics. Anymore? Okay, thank you very much, Director Vaughn. We will it's going to start driving around by itself, Waymo style here in a second. All right, we will open the public hearing um on the budget amendment for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six property tax levy, twenty twenty six general taxes, twenty twenty six service water utility rates, twenty twenty six sewer utility rates, and twenty twenty six user fees. Okay, I'm going to come back to the original uh signup sheet, and I'm just going to shamelessly go down through the list here to make sure that I don't miss anybody. Um, uh Bob Wells, would you want to comment on?
Okay, thank you, I just want to check with you, make sure.
Uh, Anne, would you like to comment on the specific topics before us hear the public hearing?
And by specific topics, you mean just the resolutions on the fees? Or are we going all the way up through the uh ordinance on the climate element?
Uh, you, the public hearing is on the budget amendment, property tax levy, general taxes, surface water rate, sewer utility rates, and user fees.
Thank you very much. Okay. Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and council members. One of the I was about twenty three years old in nineteen eighty, and there was major change in the political tenor of our nation during that year. All of a sudden, we had a candidate for national office campaigning on the platform of government is bad. The scariest words in the English language are, I'm from the government and I'm here to help. He had, he was elected president and then reelected, and the philosophy that was engendered during that time took a deep grip on our entire nation. We had policy advisors like Grover Nordquist, who talked about reducing government so that it was so small you could drown it in a bathtub. Prior to that, there'd been a general consensus after World War Two that taxes were the way that we, having a government of, by, and for the people, chose to take our resources and build our civilization. And what a civilization we built. We built highways that stretched across the nation. We built airports, we developed civil defense systems, we developed an FAA that allowed people to fly across the country safely. We developed FEMA that could respond to disasters and provide guidance at at a time when communities would be on their knees after an earthquake or a hurricane. We could bring in resources from around the country and around the world to get those communities back up and running again. We developed an education system that became the envy of the world to the point where people all over the world send their kids to this country because they can get the best education anywhere. We built civilization. And then in nineteen eighty, we turned around and we started saying taxes are bad, taxes are scary, government is bad. We always need to be scared of our government because our government's here to do terrible things to the people. It became not a government of, by, and for the people, but a force to be resisted, a force to be fought against. We are fighting against our own government. That's where we are today. I am desperately concerned that that philosophy has taken enough root in our community that we cannot raise the taxes that we need to build the civilization that we want in Lake Forest Park. You have some tough choices ahead of you. I really appreciate the effort that's been taken by all of the council members and the staff to try to create a budget that can sustain us and to make the edits that are necessary to get through the next year. I want to thank you so much for recognizing that your work here today is how we build our civilization. Much obliged.
Thank you, Anne. Appreciate your comments. Uh, Ken Passiver is not with us, Hannah Blackburn, did you want to make?
Hannah has a seat, but she gave me her comment, may I?
Absolutely, you may, Tamara. You bet. Thank you for doing that. You're always welcome to comments.
Hello, I'm Hannah Blackburn, LFP resident and parent of students at Brookside and Kellogg. I'm here to speak to budget priorities. You have difficult decisions to make. As residents of Lake Forest Park, one of the primary things we get from our city is essentially a well-funded police force. Yes, our intimate neighborhood police officers provide many benefits. I believe we can have a wider vision for what we expect our local government to offer. For example, I'd love to see investments like restrooms in parks, public places to play sports, basketball, baseball, et cetera, sidewalks. sidewalks, or even a community center. Many nearby communities have all of these in their city budget. By comparison, the city of Kenmore is paying four hundred and fifty-two dollars per resident in their twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget for public safety. The city of Lake Forest Park plans to pay six hundred and ninety-four dollars per resident in that time span. Yes, we have more officers per resident, but is that what we need? We can preserve a high level of public safety without this levy. The current public safety budget increases expenses for salaries, retirement, K nine narcotics, insurance, vehicle repair, dues, marine patrol, and SWAT. This is what, while nine-one-one calls for public safety concerns have declined year over year for several years. Lake Forest Park's public safety budget is thirty-four percent of the total budget. That is a higher percentage of the city budget than most cities in the U.S. I believe in a vision for our community that includes public dollars for more than just police. The data backs making wise cuts to public safety.
Thank you. Amy, I will come back to you. Did you have more comments or? Yeah. No, on the spot. Okay, thank you. Uh, just a second, um, Mr. Phillips, um, Connie Barnes, did you wanna comment on? Okay. Just making sure we don't miss anybody. Uh, Sally was, is not here and I won't put her on the spot again. Byron, I'll put you on the spot if you wanna have any comments or? Okay. Uh, Becky, uh, Hamilton. Okay. And John Hamilton. Nope, no comments. Okay. Is there anyone else in the council chambers that would like to make public comment at this time during the public hearing? Mr. Phillips, please join us.
Well, thank you. I'm Mark Phillips, live in Lake Forest Park, and thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, I guess some of my comments are very germane to the, uh, uh, would it turn out to be the more specific, uh, umbrella that you're talking about tonight? Those tax rates, uh, and, and, um, fee adjustments that you're talking about, and I think those all sound to me good, reasonable, and, and ought to go forward. Um, I did not hear in her remarks from, uh, um, Director Vaughn any mention of service cuts. That might be a part of this adjustment process, mid, mid-biennial adjustment process that you're undertaking. I was very glad to hear that. And I hope there's not other kinds of considerations along those lines that the council will be tempted to make. Uh, you know, in the, the shadow of the outcome of, of, of Prop one. Um, I, 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 I don't think there's any room for doing that in, in city operations, and I especially wouldn't wanna see, um, um, you know, any service reductions in, uh, public safety in the police department. We do have that seven hundred thousand annual deficit, more or less, to, to figure out. Um, I, I, I did wanna say, I guess that I, I, um, I recognize in Prop one, I, so I, so I think all of the current expenditures and planned expenditures that are a part of the current budget then should go ahead and move forward. Now, my, some of my comments now kind of diverge more into the future and it'll be, what, six months or seven months? You'll be starting out the, the biennial, the new biennial budget planning process. And so regarding that, I, I, I do think reflecting on Prop one myself, that half the voters, half the voters plus twenty-three or something like that, uh, rejected Prop one. So decided to be some way other than, to, to, to balance future budgets than, than by that property tax increase. Uh, and for me, I think a lot of people's minds had to do with spending some of those reserves that we do have, uh, uh, healthy reserves. So, so I would wanna see us continue along that path. And if, 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 if in the future budget considerations, I'd even, uh, say that you might consider, considering, consider incorporating an additional drawdown on those savings for the, the next biennial budget. Uh, and I think you'd wanna be, try to be specific about limiting that, how much that would be, and maybe to one biennial budget process. Um, that would be, uh, something like a million and a half or two million, rough figures. Plus, you've got, uh, about two million that you need to keep in the, the general fund, uh, according to financial policy. So that, uh, you could go ahead and, 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 and move along. I, I think it's, I think you need to honor the people who, who, uh, half the city plus a few, uh, you know, thought that was a reasonable way to go, but I think there should be limits on it. And I think that you, you should, one of your orders of business that I'm sure you're working on is what to do with the, the remainder that would be in the general fund after three or four million dollars were kind of reserved for those purposes. And I do think that, uh, that money should be transferred uh, to one or several of the other funds that we have where it would be more, a more dedicated purpose and would still be, allow healthy reserves for, for investment purposes. So maybe some of these remarks are, should wait to be clarified in the future, uh, when we're talking about the next biennial budget. But thank you.
Thank you very much, Mark. Appreciate your comments. Okay, are there any members? We had a couple members of the community join us. Anyone else want to comment, uh, in the public hearing, make comment on the topics in the open public hearing? Okay, going once, going twice. All right, we're gonna close the public hearing. Thank you, everybody, for your thoughtful comments. We do, uh, sincerely appreciate that. Um, I'm not sure that there are any questions that were raised during the public comment period that staff can address. Colleagues, do you have any, uh, questions that were raised in your mind that, that staff can address, um, at this time following the public comment? Okay, all right, uh, we will move on to, um.
We got it.
I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor for a turn.
Just, thanks, Mr. Mayor, and I just wanted to express appreciation for the public coming out on a relatively dry topic. And I know that basically, you know, that's not the most exciting thing, but I love the fact that there was passion in the voices of people who spoke and, you know, the fact that you came out expresses to us that you care about the city and the fact that the fiscal health of the city is critical to basically running, you know, a, a fairly smooth, uh, uh, operation and basically making all of our lives that much better. So thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor. I agree wholeheartedly. Um, okay, so, um, ordinance, uh, twenty-five thirteen eleven, amending the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six biennial budget, we can tackle that first, or if you would like to go through the other ones that we need to hopefully get completed this evening, we can, we can, um, shift them around slightly.
I I'm in favor of addressing the C three G first and then, uh, we'll, we'll have some time to talk about the Bano budget.
Okay, colleagues, what's your, what's your pleasure? That, men of all, to everyone? Because we're legal, because we're good. Everyone? Okay, let's do that. Um, let's talk about ordinance, uh, twenty-five thirteen thirteen, levying property tax for twenty twenty-six. Um, if I might do a little preface here, the, as Director Vaughn indicated, the timing of the requirements that a county for filing and send these things are awkward at best. We've been struggling with this for a period of time. Other cities have, have indicated that it's challenging based upon their budget schedules to get it's sometimes putting the cart before the horse. Uh, they're making, uh, you have to make assumptions and then adjust as you go. So, um, having said that, I appreciate your, all of your patience, um, because the way the rules are written with the county um, kind of boxes in on some of these things and we have to complete them before the end of November. So are there any questions on ordinance twenty-five, uh, thirteen thirteen, levying the property tax for twenty twenty-six? Everybody, does everybody have a chance to pull it up? Okay, uh, Deputy Mayor for a tiny.
I'd like to move, uh, for approval of ordinance twenty-five thirteen, twenty-five dash thirteen thirteen, uh, levying the property tax for twenty twenty-six.
Second.
It's been, been seconded, uh, any?
Oh, no.
Question? Okay, you were seconding. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance twenty twenty-five, uh, excuse me, twenty-five dash thirteen thirteen, levying property tax for twenty twenty-six signify by saying aye.
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 Any ayes? Guys, have it, it passes unanimously. Thank you, council. Moving on to ordinance twenty-five thirteen fourteen, levying the general taxes for twenty twenty-six. Questions for staff, colleagues? Hearing none, I entertain a motion for adoption.
I'll move. I move to approve.
Guys can thumb wrestle.
Uh, I'll move ordinance number twenty-five thirteen fourteen, ordinance of the city of Lake, uh, the city council of the city of Lake Forest Park, Washington, levying the general taxes for the city of Lake Forest Park in the King County for the fiscal year commence, commencing January first, twenty twenty-six, on all property, both real and personal in said city, that is subject to taxation for the purpose of providing sufficient revenue to carry on the services of the several departments of the city for ensuring, or for the ensuing, ensuing year as provided by law, providing for separability, blah, blah.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance, uh, twenty-five thirteen fourteen, levering the general taxes for twenty twenty-six. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any ayes? Guys have it, it passes unanimously. Thank you, council. Um, moving on to item E, uh, or resolution twenty-five, uh, two zero four five, setting the surface water utility rates for twenty twenty-six. Any questions? Comments? A poem? Okay. Entertain a motion for adoption.
All right, so I'd like to move a resolution, uh, twenty-five dash twenty forty-five, setting the surface water utility rates for twenty twenty-six.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution twenty-five two zero four five, setting the surface water utility rates for twenty twenty-six. Any questions? Deputy Mayor for a tiny.
Not so many questions. I'd like to, um, speak in favor of the motion, especially the fact that we have our stormwater technician as a result of this particular, uh, uh, rate. And, um, cannot believe the great work that this technician is doing, uh, for basically not just, um, you know, making sure that we have our MPDES permit, but also for improving the health of our streams, especially now that we're starting to test for that six PPD quinine, which is the thing that is poisoning our shenix salmon. So, thanks.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And I also, I would interject here just for learning purposes for the public, uh, these are not optional things. These are things that are mandated by the state statutes. So um, having a surface water, uh, manager on, on staff is streamlining this and we're required to move through the NPDES process, uh, post haste throughout the year. So any other questions or comments? All those in favor, uh, of adoption of resolution twenty-five two zero four five, setting the surface water utility rates for twenty twenty-six, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Eyes have it. Once again, it passes unanimously. Thank you, council. Resolution twenty-five two zero four six, setting the sewer utility rates for twenty twenty-six. Any questions for staff? I will say again, to Director Vaughn's point, this is simply a pass through and a adjustment based upon the county's rates. We set our rates based upon uh, pass through from the county and, and what we have to, um, add to the mix to make sure we're solvent in our sewer utility fund. Any questions? Uh, entertain a motion for adoption.
I move to adopt resolution twenty-five two zero four six, setting the utility, sewer utility rates for twenty twenty-six.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution twenty-five two zero four six, setting the sewer utility rates for twenty twenty-six. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Thank you, council. Once again, that passes unanimously. Appreciate that very much. Um, we are moving on to resolution twenty-five two zero four seven, adopting the twenty twenty-six user fee schedule. And once again, as a, a quick housekeeping, um, educational component, we are only allowed by law to charge for, uh, what the actual cost is for those fees. So it's important for people to recognize that, that the costs are substantive, uh, to us as well. I did entertain a motion for adoption of resolution twenty-five two zero four seven.
I move to adopt ordinance twenty-five two zero four seven, adopting the twenty twenty-six user fee schedule.
Second.
Thank you, council members. It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution twenty-five dash two zero four seven, adopting the twenty twenty-six user fee schedule. Any questions, comments? All those in favor of adoption of resolution twenty-five dash two zero four seven, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Guys have it, passes unanimously. Thank you very much, council. And now we will move back to item B, ordinance twenty-five thirteen eleven, but amending the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, um, biennial budget. And just as a, a, a quick, um, moment of relief, this is not comparative that it is passed tonight. So you have some time to have a discussion and that's why we wanted to make it, uh, have the option to, to talk about it more here and there'll be discussion. Um, additional discussion going forward. Anyone wanna tee off the discussion? Mr. Lebo, you're looking thoughtful.
Um, well, it's more, uh, questions, uh, if Director Vaughn is available. Let me get some water. So in looking at the, uh, budget, it's proposed that we use the general fund uh, unallocated, uh, fund balance for the difference between um, the additional revenue and the expenditures related to general fund, um, items. Is there a reason that we may not be able to use the, um, Budget Stabilization Fund one oh five or the Council Contingency Fund one oh two to pay for the additional expenditures related to general funds, since those two funds are purposed for paying, or purposed as a fund to recognize, um, whether there's a shortfall in revenue or an increase in expenditures, which are already in the budget as opposed to increasing the budget to the general fund by, uh, bringing in unallocated general funds. So my question is, there's a reason why we can't use the funds that are already established for the purposes of revenue or expenditure differentials from when the budget was adopted as opposed to having to bring in additional funding for the general fund?
So I understand what your, um, the request is. And the Budget Stabilization Fund, uh, yes, you could use those, that bucket of money. The city is still going to have to allocate no matter what, the additional expenses and, um, within the general fund in order to legally appropriate those, the expansion of the expenditures, and that will take place in the general fund. But the, uh, Budget Stabilization Fund, yes, if the, that was the council's desire was to remove the balance out of that fund in order to support it, that would be an option. And if the council decided to look at the contingents, the council contingency fund, um, that would take an additional resolution in order to move those funds to support the generals to support that balance.
Okay, but in terms of our adopted budget already includes the balances that are in both of those contingency funds, so the total budget would not be increasing. Is that correct?
Can you state that question again?
So our adopted twenty-five twenty-six budget includes, uh, monies in both the, um, Budget Stabilization Fund one oh five and the Council Contingency Fund one oh two. So use of those, uh, fund balances that are already included in the budget for general fund purposes would not increase the overall budget.
So I think what council member is saying is we're not increasing the overall budget, we're just balancing the budget with those two funds.
That's correct. Whereas if, if you don't use those two funds, you have to increase the the overall budget by in, by increasing because you're bringing in general.
Okay, I, I'm.
Unallocated funds.
I'm, no, no matter what, you have to increase the allocated budget. No matter what. As far as the expenditures and the revenues, you have to increase the allocated budget that is being requested within this. So fund balance is one conversation and the allocation is another. The allocation, just because um, the council would elect to uh, to, to support the fund balance from the Budget Stabilization Fund, even though that fund does not have allocated expenditures within the expense line item, that fund balance then would transfer, but regardless, the city still has to expand the appropriation of the request for the actual expenditures. So I think, um, I think we're having, I wanna make sure that we're clear that we're having two conversations, one about fund balance and one about actual legal appropriation, appropriations, allocations, expenditures, um, kind of interchanging words.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna bring it down to my level. So we have unallocated, we have balances in the ending fund balance in the general fund. We also have balances in one oh two and one oh five, Budget Stabilization Council Contingency. Those balances, regardless, will get moved into the general fund as revenue to cover the increase of expenditures. So you are. So you are increasing your revenues into the general fund to cover your increased expenditures that we're bringing forward. And then the last thing that I would point out is if you take the budget stabilization account, it has three hundred and sixty five thousand projected at the end of this year to zero, then the next conversation for council is, do you want to keep dollars in there? And if the answer is yes, then you need to allocate those from unallocated fund balance back into that so that you have a balance there for future budget stabilization. But costs have gone up. We budgeted so lean, we've closed out contracts with Teamsters and the Guild. We've had other expenditures. You are increasing your overall budget, and so you are increasing your revenues. And your expenditures is just which pot of money or which fund are you bringing those revenues in from?
I'm still confused because the budget already includes the revenue associated with the these two contingents.
But they have not been allocated into the budget.
So ironically, very ironically, the more critical piece of a budget is actually your expenditures. And that allocation is the portion of which the state auditor, when they come in and do their audit, when we talk about allocations appropriations and budgets that are expanded, that is the piece that is more critical than the revenue side. However, as far as your finance director, I am very concerned about the revenue side because the revenue side makes sure that you can operate on the additional expenditures that you are supporting and allocating and funding on an annual biennial basis. And if those operationally, meaning, and I will define operationally in my mind, means what you were bringing in in one year and what is going out the door in one year, that's when I start to, as your finance director, I I start to get uncomfortable, and that's part of the conversations that we've been having. If your expenses exceed what you are bringing in on your revenues, I'll keep it simple, a million dollars is what the city is bringing in on the revenue and it expending one point two. You're taking that two hundred thousand from your fund balance in order to balance your budget. For a simple example.
Deputy Mayor Ferratani and then Vice Chair Goldblum.
Or my, I I.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And echoing City Administrator Hill's words, I want to bring it back down to kind of my operational level here. I'm wondering then, so if we were to use the Budget Stabilization or the Council Contingency Fund, we'd have to sponsor a resolution to literally move that money from that, from the from those funds to the general fund. Effectively, basically, we we don't need to do that step if we just go from the general fund.
So for the the Budget Stabilization Fund, no. The council could make that decision and the transfer could be done internally. But for the budget or for the Council Contingency Fund, that has fund was set up that in order to move one penny out of it or around it, specifically out of it, that it takes an additional council resolution to do so.
Okay. Vice Chair Goldblum, thank you, Deputy.
Yes, so I suppose if this is sounding a bit six of one, half a dozen of the other to me. And that really, the reality is we have increased expenses, for instance, due to the union contracts that we negotiated this year. So option one is we pay those increased expenses out of the general fund. Option two is we pay them out of one of these stabilization funds. And then next year, we'll have the decision of do we want to restock those stabilization funds from the general fund? And so in that sense, it's just moving the money around. It doesn't change the reality, which is we have increased expenses that need to be paid. So I suppose what I would prefer, just for simplicity, is let's just pay it out of the general fund now. And then when we're doing our next biennial budget, we can have a council discussion about what should the role of these stabilization funds be? Are we, should we be using them? Are they no longer necessary? You know, I think Mayor French can speak to why they were created in the first place. But it seems to me that there's no sense moving money from the stabilization fund to the general fund just to refill it in nine months.
Administrator Hill.
I just wanted to add a point to that is that those funds are there if you're unallocated or your ending fund balance in the general fund is at your limit of sixteen percent. Or council has made a decision to go less than that. Those are your true emergency funds when you don't have anywhere else to go in your general fund to pay for ongoing operations of the city. That's generally why those contingency funds are set up. The sixteen percent granted is also considered your rainy day fund. Things start getting lower, I think by state law, you have to keep five percent in there. So you've got you've got a fair amount, but I don't think you ever want to get there. Two million dollars cannot operate the city for a year. So just a distinction between those funds and why why they are there. I think they were put there at a time of dire straits for the city.
I.
Councilmember Lebo, did you have?
I don't know if this will carry as much, it is very, it's a very visual and it's within our budget. But there's the fund structure visualization that's within our adopted budget. I believe it's even on page seventeen. And it's your general fund is your main fund. And then the funds that we're talking about right now, which is the Budget Stabilization Fund and the Council Contingency are what we call sub-funds or non-major funds. And those non-major funds, at the end of the day, I don't want to get too technical, but they all roll together. All of those funds quote roll into when we report our annual report to the general fund. So I just want to keep that in mind as we're having these conversations that it it when we're talking about the general fund, the Budget Stabilization Fund, the Council Contingency Fund, these are are other funds that the city has. However, they are sub-funds of the general fund, which is ultimately, they end up at the end of the day being the same fund. So I want I want to make note of that.
So Director Vaughn, just just for clarification, part of this is the fungibility of of the money. Some of those funds have restrictions that were placed upon the council, including Councilmember, former Councilmember Phillips, who's sitting in in the room here today. We all, we worked together to create those funds. There are restrictions, various restrictions on some of those sub-funds, but not state mandated. Fungibility, the general fund is the broadest.
Yes.
Fungi. I don't know. I'm not feeling like a fungi myself right now, but Councilmember Lebo and then Councilmember Riddle.
But in terms of best practices, when building budgets, it's appropriate to have contingencies in them. I come from a world of capital and well as operating budgets, and it's quite standard as best practice to have contingency budgets within that overall budget of which the council and the the ordinances that establish these funds are quite broad. And the use of contingencies during a budget period is considered a best practice rather than to tap unallocated funds. So to my other council members, while it may seem like an additional step, it's a process that when you develop a budget, you allocate a certain amount as a contingency to recognize the uncertainties of revenue and expenditures. And so as a best practice, you can then look back and say, over the two-year period of your budget, we estimated and forecasted these amounts, and we used our contingency accordingly. So that when going forward, you can estimate what you think is a reasonable contingency. And so while it may seem like an extra step, what it does is it 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 provides clarity in your original budgeting and the expenditures that you will accumulate over that two-year period. So when you look back, you can see how you did. So while it's, again, seems like a an extra step, it does preserve the process of budgeting for your biennial period. It's a comment.
And I I think the fun, what you're describing there more appropriately fits using the Budget Stabilization Fund. And and I would have to double check on the Council Contingency because when you're referring to contingencies in as far as capital versus the Council Contingency, I think those those are have two different formats as far as the rules around them. And so I want to be careful with that one. I would have to double check and circle back with you on that.
Councilmember Riddle, you've been waiting patiently.
Thank you. So in my mind, anything that isn't accounted for in our expense or our revenue is in that unallocated bucket. It hasn't been allocated for an expense, and it is not a revenue that's been allocated and it's paired with that expense. Since the Budget Stabilization Fund, the Council Contingency Fund, they're not allocated for an expense yet. So they're just unallocated funds. They just happen to be somewhat restricted, unallocated funds. So when we look at our ending fund balance, that dollars are in the ending fund balance. So when we want to use them, they will leave that and they will go in and they will be a revenue. And we have to do that. That's just a an accounting thing. Unallocated funds is unallocated funds in some ways. You know, my colleague has mentioned that like it's the Budget Stabilization Fund, kind of sounds like we should use it. We can, but our next conversation is, as others have stated, now we have to refill the Budget Stabilization Fund. We have this unallocated funds that is unrestricted. I think using that at this point, just to get us through this biennium adjustment is the best thing for us to do. And then, again, as colleagues have mentioned, let's have a more thorough conversation so we don't have to have this conversation every other year.
Thank you, council member. Colleagues, I'm looking down the dice. I want to make sure that I'm Deputy Mayor Ferratani.
I'm hoping that we're all willing to step away from this part of the conversation because I have a completely different thing to throw up. So it's basically regarding, I appreciate the fact that in Exhibit A of ordinance, there's basically a line item, not a line item, so much as an entry for climate coordinator's position. It basically lists the salary range and, you know, it's wonderful. Is that something, and I'm still trying to formulate the question in my head, is that something that we have to take into account in this budget, mid-biennial budget adjustment, or is that something that could be enacted next year? And it would have to be trued up if we were to hire that position next year?
Uh, it, yes. So we did to be proactive within the proviso and using, I worked with our HR director in order to be able to present what we thought was inappropriate. And again, not having a job description, there is some variances here that could need to be reevaluated and adjusted once it's more trued up as far as the actual need. However, the goal was to try to give something for the conversation and to be able to to allow finance to have some place to start in order to for a salary range. That would need to be amended into the actual budget if council decided to move forward. That is not currently in the budget as of this moment in the presented.
Councilmember Good.
I understand the issue of truing it up later for the climate coordinator. But do you have a timeline or is there a timeline on getting that job description? I know that there was one that was kind of a.
And yes, I think that's, I don't, I'm gonna pass this one off.
Last spring, council was provided, as you mentioned, with a draft job description. I think if council were to adopt the budget on December eleventh and include that position, we would come back fairly quickly to council. I know that Shannon, our HR director, has been doing additional work recently on that position. There's been a question of, is it a coordinator or is it a manager? What are the differences? She sent out an email to that effect. So yeah, it wouldn't hinder getting that job moving forward. We've got enough of a start. It's just some small edits to get the job description ready.
Right. I'd just like to see if it's been updated, what it looks like.
The data has not been updated.
Okay, well, okay.
And on point to Councilmember Good's comment, we are going to be discussing this at the Monday special meeting.
Uh, Councilmember Riddle?
Yeah, I just would like to point out that we do have climate coordinator in our salary schedule at this time. But obviously, it's a zero FTE because we have not.
Yeah.
But we do know what our anticipated costs are at this time. Is it, do we approve the positions and salary schedule when we approve the biennial budget? Is that part of that?
So, so yeah. I apologize for speaking over you. Yes, as part of the the twenty twenty six, that salary schedule is included as an Exhibit A, and that goes with that same ordinance. I'm sorry, I'm looking for the ordinance number twenty five thirteen eleven, which is the biennial budget adjustment. There is that attachment, which is the salary schedule.
But nothing is in the expenditures yet. We just have simply identified the potential salary.
So when we adopted, I'm sorry, I stepped over you too. The twenty five twenty six biennial budget was adopted. This was not included.
Okay.
This highlight of climate coordinator would be in addition into the twenty twenty six budget if you adopted on December eleventh to include that.
Colleagues, if I may, we're going to have two other opportunities, including at the special meeting on Monday. We're going to have specific conversations, or you all have specific conversations, and then action on December eleventh. I would suggest that, given some of the other topics we have here on the agenda, that if there are sort of high-level questions that come to mind right now that you would like to share with your colleagues and staff, let's go there. Or specifics are fine as well, but there's plenty of opportunity in the future too as well. Vice Chair Goldblum.
Yeah, so thinking about high level, in terms of the various amendments that are being proposed for the mid-biennial adjustment, there's a couple of them that are more policy focused. One is the climate coordinator position. A second is an additional human resources staff member. And then the third is sort of restructuring, retitling our judicial department. So I might encourage my colleagues to think about those as the three kind of core policy decisions that we need to make as part of the mid-biennial budget. And I don't know if we if we want to start those conversations tonight, or if we want to start those on Monday as part of our special meeting.
Thank you, Vice Chair Goldman. You should be a professor. Oh, wait a minute. Thank you for that. Assistant. Anyone else? We'll look down, Councilmember McCartney, Councilmember Saunders, any questions or question? Comments? Okay, Councilmember Lebo.
Thank you. To the council members, I would like to propose a motion, not this evening, but in our further discussions with regard to providing funding for some pickleball improvements. And I just wanted to understand if there were any things that we should address in that motion, or if there's any support for it.
I would support that.
Okay. Colleagues? We don't have to make a decision now, but.
I was.
Yes, Councilmember Riddle.
Listening to their concerns, I also would note that we have the new art installation there. We may want to speak to the chief about the safety aspects and have him take, you know, give us some input on whether that might want to get lighted as well so they can see what's happening in that part of the park. So I'd like to hear from the chief what his recommendations would be.
Thank you, Councilmember. Is it acceptable, Mr. Lebo, to bookmark that for next future conversation? People can think about it? Yes, please.
Um, another additional question. If I understand right, the, would this be the appropriate time, when I refer to mid-biennium adjustments, to move or update our capital improvement plan, which is a plan, but does not in itself dictate expenditures? So would this not be the right time to both update our proposed capital improvement plan? Because there have been adjustments, as well as recognize in the budget planned expenditures that are otherwise shown in the plan, which is just a plan, not a budget.
Administrator Hill, would you like to take this one?
Yeah, I'll take those. So to the two points, right, normally, we adopt the CIP every two years. We don't make mid-biennial adjustments to that. As you stated, it's just a plan. Certainly take a look at that. To the point, and this is in your email that I hope to have a response to in the near future, there are several projects that are listed within the CIP that are currently, as you say, just a plan. I would come back to council with allocation of funds for those expenditures when we get contract as we go out for RFPs to bring contracts forward to council. We have the revenues, we've identified them in the plan, but there is no sense in having council allocate an expenditure that we do not yet know. Those were just best guesses of costs. And we will go through an RFP and contract process that will require council approval and to authorize those expenditures.
I guess I'd. I, I guess I'd reframe the, the, the question then. We show in our, uh, plan, a number of expenditures proposed for 2026, but we don't reflect the values of the revenue that would be needed to support those planned expenditures. Recognizing that those expenditures would not accrue until you have contracts, but wouldn't you need to put the revenue into the budget in order to have those expenditures?
Correct. And I've checked with Director Vaughn. We do have the revenues in the budget for those. We have the, we're moving, we've got the $300,000 that the mayor asked for, um, in the, you know, CIP for the studies of Lake Forest Park Elementary and Brookside Elementary, uh, multimodal improvements. Those are included in the revenue side, not yet in the expenditure side. Um, we have, uh, what's the other project? We have, I'm trying to remember everything right off the top of my head. Hang on, I've got it here. The other thing that we have is the guard rail replacement program. Those funds are within the budget, but have not been allocated on the expenditure side, uh, to the total of 250,000, 100,000 this year, 150,000 next year. The only thing that we did not allocate in the budget was the 400,000 for the surface water capital fund, 403 for data collection. That's, um, for some further discussion because that's only a small portion of a much larger project. Totalling more than we have in that fund.
I, I guess part of my question is we're showing more planned, uh, expenditures in the CIP than are being requested in the revenue. And so does that just reflect that we overestimated what we thought we needed to spend? Or that we're not planning to initiate those projects that would otherwise require that amount of expenditures? And therefore require revenue budgeted.
So we allocated, and this is getting into details, but we allocated the dollars in the revenues for the, the two walkway projects that I just mentioned, as well as the guardrail replacement and the sanitary system master plan. The stormwater master plan, we did not. So you would probably see dollars within the CIP that are in excess of what's in the budget. And that's why in the CIP, especially, you know, to speak to the stormwater system master plan that was shown in red, because it has a funding issue. So there's, correct. There are more things in the CIP than will get done in 2026.
And now on point, I think that I've, with the CIP being a six-year horizon, there are six, five and six. As mandated by state law, there are plenty of things in there that are not funded and not brought into the mix yet until they have revenue associated with moving forward. So, um, Director Vaughn, you're looking thoughtful.
I, I was just gonna, um, add that with the roundabout project, that is Public Works' number one priority at this time, too, in addition. That that is taking a lot of bandwidth, internal bandwidth. I'll put it that way.
Okay. Colleagues, Deputy Mayor Ferratoni. Oh, I thought you were raising your hand, scratching your hair. It's all right. Are we comfortable with where we are right now for setting up, teeing this up for a very, uh, discussion on Monday coming up soon?
Yep.
Um, I would encourage you, this is Thursday night. If you have questions for staff, please, please submit them early tomorrow at a respect of their, their family time over the weekend. It'd be important and barring that, don't necessarily expect a response early on Monday. So, if you're comfortable, folks, we're going to move on to the BNO tax. And I think Director Vaughn, you're on deck for this as well. Ordinance 25-
I am on deck for this.
There, uh, 1315 amending Chapter 5.05 Business and Occupation Tax, Section 5.05.040, Definitions of the Lake Forest Park Municipal Code. Director Vaughn.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so this one's pretty straightforward. Um, there is a group, uh, that are together of a bunch of cities that work with AWC. And we've created a model ordinance, um, in order to have the same structure pretty much throughout the, the state of Washington. Every city that does BNO tax, um, we try to keep it very similar. Due to a Senate bill that passed 5814, there have definitely been some changes in what they're defining as sales tax. So the changes in the redlined, um, in the redlined code in this, this ordinance basically go to changing, including and revising language for, um, the sale at retail, sale at wholesale and, um, the retail wholesale services, advertising services, live presentations, which I'm anticipating that may have an impact ironically on our training budgets. So to kind of connect this back to where we think we're, it's too soon to tell. And I'm just gonna own that that is part of the fiscal impact is that after about a year, I think we'll have a better um, understanding of how this fully will impact the city. Um, information technology services, custom website development services, investigation, security, armed car services, um, temporary staffing services, sale of custom software and custom customization of pre-written software. And yes, the city uses quite a few of those. And so the impacts, um, are going to come forward as the cities now will be paying sales tax on some of those. And so I think also there will be some BNO tax on the revenue side and what the impacts will be as far as the revenue versus the expenditures. It's a little too soon to tell. Hopeful that within about a year, we will have some better information on what that will really look like. Um, again, this is just a standard code. It was from a Senate bill that changed again, um, and this is just the first touch, so open for the conversation. And I'm grateful Attorney Pratt is here to help me.
One other quick background note, colleagues, uh, I know that the legislature is going to be taking this up again to tighten it up in the next legislative session because there are some unintended consequences. And the legislature was trying to patch their leaking ship on budget. So, uh, it's going to be a moving target, uh, unfortunately, and we'll probably have to do this again next year after the legislative session adjourns and the governor signs off on things. Questions for Director Vaughn, colleagues. Again, this is the first touch. Councilmember Lebo.
Thank you, Director Vaughn. Um, just for understanding, BNO tax rates are different than sales tax rates, which we are familiar with. So is there a way to sort of ballpark or range what a BNO tax impact might be on the city expenditures? With, with in sense of, you know, are we talking it's a 1%, 10%, 20%?
Not even the larger cities are going after that conversation right now. Everybody is for the most part waiting to see how it comes out. Um, this is, I, I understand exactly what you're saying. This is very unknown on the, on what will come in versus the impact of the additional expenses for what cities pay on this. Or are you just asking on the revenue side?
No, well, in terms of, you know, how much is BNO tax as a percentage? Or is it just, you can't calculate it?
Isn't it 0.00?
I think he's asking what's the percent increase too would be.
I don't believe there, there is not an increase as far as the-
Just added to those.
Councilmember Good has both hands up and is made a dance up here. So I definitely bet.
I know about this. So, so what it is, uh, in, in to dumb it down to my level, um, it's, it, this new tax is, is now charging sales tax on services that were no, that were not charged tax on before. So you can't predict it because it depends on what those people are actually selling. So I pay BNO tax based on, at the Sheridan market, based on what my sales are. So I can't predict that. I can take an average, you know, I can take an average over some months, but you can't predict what it is. And so a lot of businesses are being impacted to, uh, Mayor French's that they're actually going out of business because they're now charging sales tax. What that city's sales tax rate is, they have to charge for their services. So you can't predict that at all because it depends on what is being sold.
Yeah. Vice Chair Goldman and then Councilmember Riddle.
So is it accurate to say that while the budgetary impacts of this change are complicated and not exactly known yet, from a policy perspective, we don't really have discretion here. It's we either need to adopt the new state law or be in violation of the new state law.
Correct.
Seriously, you should be a professor. Councilmember Riddle.
Is, would any of these changes necessitate renegotiating or coming back and amending contracts with any of our outside services that might be impacted?
I do think that we have had certain vendors come forward to say heads up. As of 1-1, you, we will be including, and some of them are larger vendors, um, as a, as a polite heads up.
But not necessarily have to renegotiate contracts.
It's-
Contracts usually state that they have to pay the appropriate sales tax.
Okay, thank you. I'm just curious if there's more busy work time on your hands that would come into play, but it sounds like it's just money.
Deputy Mayor Ferratoni.
So given that, uh, December 11th is suddenly looking really crowded, I want to basically move on Ordinance 251315, amending Chapter 5.05 Business and Occupation Tax, Section 5.05.040, Definitions of Lake Forest Park Municipal Code.
Spending?
Well, and then we'll do that, right? I have to make-
Okay, sure. Okay. I've been moving seconded. Any, um, any questions or comments?
Well, I'll, I'll now move to suspend the three-touch rule on, uh, the, uh, move for, uh, approving Ordinance 25-1315.
Second.
Okay, move the seconded to suspend the three-touch rule on 25, uh, 1315, Deputy Refrati.
And I'll speak on the waiving of the rule. Yes, again, basically, uh, we're fast-tracking this. I think, um, I think, uh, Vice Chair Goldman put it best, um, we don't really have a lot of wiggle room in this one. We're either in compliance with state law or not. So, um, given that basically, uh, you know, the read through this, it, you, um, all the red lines show basically all those sections that are affected. And given that the language at least makes, makes sense at my level, I'm very much in favor of waiving the three-touch rule and just getting this off our plate.
Okay. Any other comments on waiving the three-touch rule or the main motion? Let's start with, um, passing or not of the waiving of three-touch rule. All those in favor of waiving three-touch rule on, uh, Ordinance 251315, please say aye.
Aye.
Any days? Guys have it? The three-touch rule was raved on Ordinance 251315. Back to the main motion. Ordinance 25, uh, uh, all those in favor of, of adoption of Ordinance 2513, amending, excuse me, 1315, amending Chapter 5.05 BNO, uh, Business Occupation Tax, Section 5.05.040, Definitions of Lake Forest Park Municipal Code, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any days? Guys have it? Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Deputy Mayor, for moving that forward. It makes it a quieter evening on the 11th. Thank you, Director Vaughn, very much. Um, and, um, Director Hoffman, you're still here with us. Thank you for being patient. Ordinance 25, uh, 1312, adoption of a new climate element and with greenhouse gas production and resilience subelements into the Lake Forest Park, 2024 comprehensive plan update. Mr. Hoffman.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. Mark Hoffman, Community Development Director. This is the third presentation. So for the video and the record, uh, a little history. On October 23rd, a formal presentation was given by Cascadia, the consultant, uh, hired by the city to perform this work. Uh, on November 13th, uh, City Council meeting, a public hearing was held and closed. No revisions were made, and this is the third presentation. So this is the opportunity for me, for staff, to talk less. But I don't mean to imply by that that this isn't big and important. One other obligation, and nobody's asked me why, after seven meetings of the Climate Policy Advisory Team, five meetings of the Planning Commission, but I constantly repeat, this was funded by a grant from the Department of Commerce, an amount of $500,000, uh, made possible by the Climate Commitment Act in 2021. It's because it is a clause in our grant agreement, uh, to do so. So I must continue. This may be the last time I have to say that. That grant made it possible for King, for cities in King County. Uh, the, the legislated due date is December of, uh, 2029. Obviously, we are years, uh, in advance of that. So it's a privilege, but that's made possible by that funding. We wouldn't be in this position. So I bring that up. And it, uh, enabled the, uh, quality work by Cascadia to work with the community and put this in place. So there are no more steps. The public hearings been held. There's been no, uh, local SEPA appeal on this. The 60-day commerce review, uh, is over. You've received Jeff Aiken's comments. Uh, the one, uh, that we talked about prior was, uh, about the net zero goal. We didn't make any revisions to the draft from the public hearing. Some can be made tonight, but I believe, uh, the city attorney is going to say that they can't be substantive. We don't imagine that there are, but Cascadia is here. The version that you have in the packet tonight is a clean version from Cascadia minus the red lines underlying, uh, and emphasis that were in the last packet to show what, uh, revisions the Planning Commission took uh, over the draft from the Climate Policy Advisory Team. So with that, I'm available for questions, uh, and as is Cascadia. And there are no carryover questions for staff to respond to from the public hearing. Thank you.
My friends, questions for Director Hoffman or friends at Cascadia? Deputy Refrati.
Just an expression of gratitude to both, uh, Director Hoffman and staff, as well as Cascadia. I'm doing such a great job in basically shepherding all of our thoughts and especially all the different committees' thoughts into this document, which is eminently readable. And I really recommend to those of you in the audience out there in TV land, yeah, take a look at it. For a document that's a high-level policy document, it's, it's really basically well-written.
I'd say pretty darn good, actually. Yeah. Vice Chair Goldman.
Um, also not a question, but something I really do want to emphasize since we just had a fairly detailed budget conversation. Overall, this climate element is coming in four years early and for free because it's paid with state money. So, you know, it's not often we get to say early and under budget, but early and under budget. So I think that's something to brag about.
Hold on to the dream. Councilmember Riddle.
And I would like to say that we're getting this done so early that we're going to be able to start going for additional grants to implement this while everyone else is still just trying to get their climate element done. So more opportunities for us in the near future. Um, I appreciate all the effort and work that went into this from various committees and members and task force and consultants. Um, it's, it is readable and I really appreciate that. So, thank you.
Colleagues, I, I, uh, for once you're at a loss for words. Uh, Deputy Mayor Ferratoni.
I'd like to move Ordinance 25-1315, amending, sorry, 251312. Catching something here apparently. The adoption of a new climate element with greenhouse gas reduction and resilient subelements into the city of Lake Forest Park, 2024 comprehensive plan update.
Moving seconded to adopts, adopt Ordinance 25, uh, 1312, adoption of a new climate element with greenhouse gas reduction and resilient subelements into the city of Lake Forest Park, 2024 comprehensive plan update. Any comments? Deputy Refrati.
Just briefly, I want to acknowledge basically those of the community members who spoke about parking minimums and appreciate your comments. And I think there'll be a more appropriate venue for that discussion to continue. So that discussion is by no means over.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. All those in favor of adoption of, uh, I was gonna say 2513, I've got 13 on the brain. 251312, adoption of a new climate element and greenhouse gas production and resilient subelements into the city of Lake Forest Park, 2024 comprehensive plan update. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any days? Guys have it? Congratulations, Director Hoffman and our friends at Cascadia. Keith lift. And I am going to hold on to that dream of free and early. So, um, thank you very much, Director Hoffman. That's a huge milestone. And I know you've got some vacation coming up here. Well deserved. And very, many thanks for our friends at Cascadia. We do really appreciate your lift. You can't see me, but I'm-
He's waving.
Have a great evening, y'all. Thanks again for your efforts. Really appreciate it. Great work.
Thanks so much for the opportunity to work with you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, it's a special meeting, so we can't add anything to the agenda. All we have left is an executive session. I don't anticipate, let's see, wait a, we have two, that's right, we have two here. Executive session, consideration of the acquisition of real estate, real estate purchase or lease pursuant to RCW 42.30.110, friends, one, friends B, and review of the performance of a public employee for RCW 42.30.110, friends, one, friends G. I guess we're going to be clearing the council chambers for expediency. We appreciate you coming. This is an executive session. We have to keep it closed. Thank you so much. 15 minutes, folks, so we'll adjourn to executive session. Please fasten your seatbelts. Sorry, there's a joke in here somewhere. We're back in session from executive session. I didn't entertain a motion to adjourn main meeting.
So moved.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.